Person on Wednesday, September 11, 2024 at 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing the reappointment of Salem City Clerk Eileen Simons with a term to expire, term to expire June 28, 2027. This meeting will be held in the City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts, second floor. Please click the link below to join the webinar. Password 009677 or use the telephone. In person shall be the primary method of public access to such meetings. A secondary method of public access may be provided if technologically feasible through Salem Access Television and/or remotely through Zoom. See below for remote access SATV information. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communication such as sign language interpreter, assisted listening devices, or print material in digital format or reasonable modification in program services, policies, or activities may contact City of Salem ADA Coordinator as soon as possible, no less than two business days before the meeting. Agenda: Reappointment of Salem City Clerk Eileen Simons, a term to expire June 28, 2027. Good evening, everyone. As we begin tonight's meeting to discuss the reappointment of our city clerk, I want to remind us all of the importance of what we're here to do tonight. Our role here is not simply to decide on reappointment, but also to do so with a measured and thoughtful approach. The city clerk has dedicated decades of her career to the city of Salem overseeing critical functions from managing elections to preserving vital records and ensuring the effective operation of the city council. Her long and dedicated service has earned our respect, and I know each of us will treat her with the respect and dignity that is deserved. I also want to emphasize that as leaders, we have responsibility to conduct this evaluation in a fair and professional manner. Our own rules remind us that personalities must be avoided in these deliberations. Tonight's meeting must remain focused on job performance and not be clouded by personal feelings or emotions. I want to note this is a public meeting as the performance of the city clerk is a matter of public interest. However, any sensitive personnel matters, as is our practice, should always be handled privately in an executive session. We are not in executive session tonight. This meeting will strictly focus on the city clerk's job performance. Our job tonight is to provide a clear assessment of past performance, offer constructive guidance on expectations moving forward, and if necessary, establish timelines for meeting those expectations. By keeping our discussion focused on the role and responsibilities of the city clerk, we ensure that our decisions are based on facts and the needs of the city rather than personal opinions. All right, so what we're going to do here tonight is we're going to take public comment to start off with, and then we'll move to Eileen and then to the council for questions and comments. So anyone who wants to make public comment, please make your way to the podium.
Tom Fury, 36 Dunlap Street, former city councilor for 24 years. 12 years on the school committee. I'm honored to be here to advocate for our strong friend, advocate for the city of Salem, our city clerk. And I'm here in honor. So if I may make a statement on my experience being here. I miss it. I miss the opportunity here. I think we're in good hands for each and every one of you, and I think you are the wind beneath our wings on the city council. I look before, as I come into the city council, and each and every one of you comes into the city hall to room one. And it's named Room One because of number one. The city clerk's office is number one after Debbie Burkett Jarre, the late city clerk that I served and died unfortunately of cancer. So we named it after her, Debbie Burkett Jarre, number one room. It's one-stop shopping. It's central plaza of the city of Salem to meet city needs. I see before us in the city council chambers the Fusco Room, right behind us as I speak. The Fusco Room is named after Josephine Fusco. I had the privilege and pleasure of my 36 years in city government and four years on the city planning board to serve with Josephine Fusco. The room was named after her, Debbie Burkett Jarre, room number one. Shell Point, our former city councillor, and now my honor to stand up and be your friend, Eileen Simons. The city council's role is the most primary role of the city council is to pick the city clerk. The city clerk is your primary responsibility. You pick. You pick the city clerk. You give her a raise. You give her an evaluation. So it's your responsibility. It says in the manual, you shall give a raise. Not the mayor, not anybody else, you, if you want to advocate for a raise. So every year I give flowers to the city clerk's office to say thank you to the city clerk. What does the city clerk do on Christmas time? She goes to each and every office with that plant. And she says, Tom Fury gave us the plant, saying thank you to your service. She doesn't believe "I" in the word "team." There's no "I" in "team." It's a team effort for the city council, the second oldest city hall in Salem. So I give flowers. She goes to every single office saying, here's the flowers. That's the way she is. She's a team leader, team, city clerk. And she knows each of us in this city hall is the wind beneath our wings. From dog licenses to marriages, it is the epicenter of the city hall that we meet in so often. It's one-stop shopping. Multi-language ability, opportunities that she advocated for over the years. It's a city hall meeting the 21st century needs. The city clerk is in charge of the historic records of the city hall that we have in the city. Is the person to go to, the one person to go to for the restoration and the renovation of this city hall, the second oldest city hall in the U.S., the first one being St. Augustine. And as I look at you, who advocated for the change in this very hall? Who advocated for the very furniture in this hall being restored, fixed up, to what I'm speaking at? She did. She was the instrument, the person to go to, the city clerk. And that, she took the high road on that situation. So I'm here to speak on her behalf, by may. The city clerk is the go-to trusted curator of the city hall officers. She makes us shine throughout the year as elected officials. We need that professionalism day in and day out, 365 days. From our elections to recounts to certification, the training of our poll workers, ensuring our handicapped access to all voters, lighting, safety guidelines. Each of us are orientated in the first year of our office as new city councillors. We are fully informed of our duties and responsibilities beyond the city council that you said at for our inaugurations. Each is so well orchestrated, we cannot take it for granted because of the city clerk's office. The oaths and swearing-in of police and fire department people are all arranged for the city clerk's office. The elections office is fully up to date with voter lists, city handbooks, the city biannual book on citizens, births, occupations, and so on. A lot of paperwork, a lot of bureaucracy in the city clerk's office. And she's in charge of it. She's the go-to person. The city council meetings that you meet at and I met at the last 24 years, I had the pleasure of working with, show, the city council meetings are cable-covered as I speak right now, cable cover. Here I'm speaking before this beautiful podium here. Hybrid meetings for public participation and online participation. The city hall annex across the street is, again, a one-stop shop for citizens in the 21st century that want their business done. There it again, time and time again, the city clerk is there. The human face of the city clerk's office, Eileen Simons. She is also our confidential and professional mentor as city elected officials, city councillors. There were times we take for granted the place and trust we place, confidence in her and what she do. I served on the planning board for the last four years, four years. It's great professionals, but its meetings are just one Zoom with Zoom. We are desensitized and immune from the basic human touch that you have tonight in this chamber, with the ability of me to speak live to you. You can see my human face when I speak for my. We don't see that at the planning board. It's a sin. All public meetings should be public and open now. As each meeting opens up to a hybrid meeting, inverse meetings, each of you are fully documented with your documents in front of you by the city clerk office, with packages and paper in line and the backup materials that we often have, which is quite thick on iPhones and iPads and so on, for making it a professional meeting, a local democracy. The public is truly unaware of all the behind-the-scenes work that we see here tonight, allowing me to speak here tonight. I have personally made an analogy of what the city clerk does to being the conductor of the Wastapops. Budget meetings, budget books, personnel data on the city. It's an amazing amount of work for one person to do. But again, it's a team effort, and she, Eileen Simons, we are blessed to have. Public service is a calling, a service, and each of you serve so with great professionalism. And I'm here to speak to say thank you to each and every one of you. Your salaries have not been increased in the last five years. I was the one who put an increase for salaries back when I was on the city council for the mayor. Nothing's been done. I don't think the city clerk's office, the raise, has been done. So you work professionally above and beyond the call of duty without pay raises every single year that I get myself as a retired schoolteacher. I was a chaperone on a school bus for many, many years and a school teacher for 40 years. And students would often sing out a host of songs. Tonight, the MTV Awards are going on tonight. They were canceled and postponed because of the debate last night by the two candidates. And the kids would often sing on the bus. The wheels on the bus go round and round, round and round. Pardon my voice. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. But today, you know and I know. People will question that. People will question even the wheels on the bus are round and round. They'll question even if they're happy. You're there, this voice, you're allowing me to speak tonight. So I thank each and every one of you to speak. So I do not question the 21st century role and responsibility of our city clerk. I say unequivocally, we are blessed to have Eileen Simons. She is the wind beneath our wings. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fury. Anyone else in person that'd like to speak? I see online, Mr. Solomon, are you just wanting, you had your hand up? Are you just wanting to speak publicly? Sorry, I can't hear you right now. Can you?
Can you? I'm not sure why. Can you hear me now?
I just wanted to say that.
Can you hear me now?
You want to speak publicly? We'll get to the online afterwards. I just wanted to see why you had your hand up.
I just wanted to say, can you, can you, can you hear me? I just wanted to say that.
We'll take anyone else who's in the room here tonight, and then we'll move over to Mr. Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Donald Bates, 31 Suddow Way, Salem, Mass. I'm a former city councillor, and I'm on the Board of Registration of Voters. Worked with Eileen for ten years. She's always been responsive to our needs. She works very hard in that office, particularly with the additional duties now, early voting and mail-in voting really added to a burden down there. If anything, they need additional staffing. I'll throw that in for a minute. Into the mic, can you all hear me now? Okay, Donald Bates. Okay, works very hard. City needs experience, her experience and her expertise, voting requirements. A lot of cities and towns, the city clerks are leaving. They don't have that expertise any longer, and it's become a very demanding job. She's been very responsive to the needs of every member of the Board of Registers throughout the years. So given that, I'll rebrief. I fully support her for a term for another three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Anyone else in person who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to Mr. Solomon.
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to say.
I'm not hearing you right now, Mr. Solomon. Can you? Go ahead and speak. Yeah, we can hear you now.
Yeah. The only thing I wanted to say, sir, is that the audio was not working on the Zoom. So for 15 minutes, I didn't hear any audio for the city council meeting for the first 15 minutes, which was unfortunate. I'll take it that it was complimentary statements by the person speaking about the city clerk. So I'm not too concerned about that. The audio seems to be working now, but I'm here to represent Ms. Simons. And if there was anything concerning that was being said, I'd be more concerned about that since I'm here. And it was known to the city council that I'm here via Zoom to represent her. I would hope that the Zoom would have been tested before the city council meeting. But so I would just like to be able to review the minutes and know what was said for those 15 minutes when I wasn't able to hear. But other than that, I'd just like to hear what is said and speak at a later point after I hear everything. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll note that the primary method of this meeting is in person. We often have technological issues, unfortunately. And that was probably my error on this one here. I'll just recap for those at home. I opened the meeting by just reminding councillors that we are here to discuss the job performance of the city clerk. And this is not an executive session meeting. We are not talking about personnel matters or sensitive matters. This is purely the job performance of the city clerk. And to ensure we keep all conversation respectful and mindful of what we're here to discuss tonight, former councillor Fury got up and gave some complimentary remarks of Ms. Simons, and that was all that was spoken of in that 15-minute timeframe. Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Simons. Eileen, if you'd like to come up and just let us know, you know, what last three years, what your accomplishments have been, what you've worked on, what your goals are, anything else you'd like to discuss before the council.
All right. As my reappointment for the next three years is being taken up, I was asked to discuss my accomplishments, goals, and objectives. Therefore, and just this morning, so bear with me, it's hopefully put together. Therefore, I went back to our fiscal year 2022 through 2025 budget books to look over my narratives as a refresher for all three departments. Many goals have been met, some I am still working on, and some have been replaced with other goals as time changes. Some highlights that I am proud of are purchasing the online marriage software. Salem was one of the first communities to implement this software. This has allowed couples to fill out their intentions in the comfort of their own home and the ability to find out the information they need instead of coming in and spending time at the counter and handwriting out the forms. The software cuts down the time the couple needs to spend at city hall and reduces the errors my staff make from having to retype the information onto a license. The software also allows a license to be printed out, and certifying a marriage certificate makes it easier on my staff. Getting my offices fixed and updated for not only aesthetics but for health reasons, I know that that had been some of my goals. I believe when councillor Prozinski was the chair of the Government Services that we started to look in that with the previous building person. And I'm happy to say that, you know, pipes have been insulated, the plaster on the walls and ceilings repaired, and the falling wallpaper removed. And I hate to say, but a very disgusting ward replaced with some nice luxury vinyl, vinyl plywood. Let's see. Also, redistricting and represencing, which is done every 10 years, was a very long and tedious project in which you had to follow the state rules and regulations. I was able to accomplish the redrawing of the lines without moving too many ward and precincts around. I was also able to get a portion of March Street back into Ward Two. After demonstrations and RFPs for new voting equipment, I purchased 16 new Image Cast Generation Two machines from LHS to replace the active vote voting machines that the city purchased back in 1998. A lot of time and effort was put into getting my staff, wardens, and clerks trained on the new machines, and then all the other poll workers, especially those that tend to the ballot box, to learn this new machine. This past September 3, state primary, last week, was the first election that they were used. And I must say, everyone seemed to like them, especially my wardens and clerks. There were less jams, therefore less hand counts. Replacing these machines was important for me to do before the November 5 presidential elections. Since Salem became a dual-language community, and there were two ballots for the fiscal, I'm sorry, for the 2022 state election, which included ballot questions, and this year I expect five questions, so I expect it to be two cards again. And I'm hoping that there'll be less jams. Working with IT and SATV to be able to go hybrid, to be able to go hybrid with our meetings, I think that was back in 2022. I looked, and it would appear that April 14 was the first meeting that the public was allowed to attend. It continued to take some time and great work in relationships with IT and SATV to keep tweaking issues as they arose. And I noted whatever this issue was tonight with the crackling sound. I'm not sure. Let's see. I added a signup link for the public testimony to the council agendas. Beginning in 2022, I started researching agenda software companies and held virtual meetings with Granicus and Civic Plus. I signed up for a free 60-day demo with Granicus. Before this could start, I had to attend Granicus University for training classes. It was during these virtual sessions that I decided that Granicus was not the right fit for me or for the city clerk's office. I continued to have virtual meetings with Civic Plus, Escribe, and my last demo was done by Prime Gov on March 14 of 2022. And I believe councillor Masilo and Stott was involved in a couple of those demos. The decision to go with Civic Plus was based on the fact I felt it was closest to what I do now. Maureen and I started training with Katie Black in July of 2022. I did create a simple agenda back then in August, but was not comfortable with the process. Then September 2022 state elections, the first with a dual language, came upon us, with one week of in-person early voting started at the end of August of 2022, and all the vote-by-mail applications received. And after finalizing that election, I went back to training with Katie in early October 2022. And then, of course, there was now two weeks of in-person early voting and vote-by-mail applications again for the November state election. So that was one of the reasons that I wasn't able to finish up that year. With Kim Driscoll winning Lieutenant Governor, I worked with our city solicitor to write a home petition regarding special elections and how to fill the vacancies. So not much relating to Civic Plus took place in 2023 due to the following reasons. One, Katie Black, the trainer I was working with, left Civic Plus in early 2023. Room Three was down one full-time person beginning in April of that year, and Maureen had to, and I self, had to work a lot with helping out there. With Mayor Driscoll winning the Lieutenant Governor seat, two special elections had to be held in 2023. The primary took place in March of '23, and then the special final election was May of '23. Then the regular local elections took place in September and November of that year. Also during the '23 organizational meeting, I had to prepare the agenda to incorporate Kim's resignation and electing an acting mayor. Since Katie Black left Civic Plus, I had worked with two different virtual trainers before Amy Douglas came out and trained me in person on May 29 and 30 of this year. Unfortunately, Maureen was still on medical leave to learn as well. I was able to learn the basics with her training onsite, and I was able to create an agenda which I emailed to councillor Hapworth. I learnt a lot in those two days. Amy Douglas had finished some, had to go back to her office and finish up some updates and other items that we discussed during this training. And we have been going back and forth since that time to try to get to the next step of that. And the last correspondence was on July 25 to try to coordinate some more dates. And then, you know, unfortunately, August, again, I'm in election mode, is coming early August where we had in-person early voting. Let's see. So at the end of 2022, at the beginning of '23, councillor Stott asked for shared drives for the committees in order to put the council orders that were referred in these drives instead of getting scanned PDF versions via email. It took a while, but with IT's help, we were able to set up some shared drives for the council subcommittees, and I am placing the tracking forms as well as any council orders that were referred to that committee. Maureen also attaches a link to these items when posting meeting notices. You know, and after doing, and as I said, it took a while. After doing something for, you know, decades, it was, it was, it was, it took a while to pivot, but I think that the shared drives have been working. Let's see. I obtained 11 iPads for every council to use for council meetings. I've held two parliamentary classes for council over the last couple of years, one with Joanne Gonzalez, who was familiar with cushions, and then another with Peter Sinopolis when we amended our rules to use Robert's rules. I also took a two-day class on Robert's rules in order to assist councillors. Since 2022 was our first elections with required dual language, the Department of Justice sent out a crew that went to all my voting locations and interviewed my poll workers and was looking at my signage. They spoke Spanish with my translators, and I also demonstrated to them how my virtual poll workers work. And one of the DOJ representatives had a conversation with a third-party translator. I was found with no violations. After many years of asking, I was finally allotted another full-time employee in the elections office for fiscal year '24. I hired internally an employee from the parking department and has been a remarkable addition to the office. Just to go back and give you an idea on what elections have transpired since the last three years, we had a September-November 2021 local elections with a recount in Ward Four. And in September and November 2022 with the state elections. And then in March, May, September, and November 2023 with special and local elections. And March and September of this year, March was a presidential primary, and the September election was for the state primary with the November 5 presidential election looming. Instead of purchasing a high-speed scanner with CIP, I was, with the CIP money I was granted, I purchased two pieces of equipment from Quadient. I apologize. Thought I had that one silent. I purchased two pieces of equipment from Quadient. I started using these pieces of equipment for the September election, and even with a few glitches, it has saved us on time and resources. These two pieces of equipment are, one that can timestamp and open up to 400 envelopes in seconds, including the ballots. And the other piece of equipment will be able, has printed labels on the outgoing ballot envelope with the voter's address and our return address, and also a label with the barcode on the inner envelope. My staff and I were able to mail out over 4,000 ballots in the first round in a matter of two days instead of weeks or having an assembly line or crew gather upstairs like I have had in the past. And I'm looking forward to kind of using that for the November election. Although I have not met all of my goals over the last three years, I continue to keep them on for the next fiscal year. Nor have I mentioned all of my accomplishments I have done that I have done running three departments. It is at times difficult, you know, to work with 11 different people at once as well as following all local, state, and federal laws. At times, my goals are met because, are not met because something will come up that was not anticipated. Therefore, I have to switch my priorities and work on new tasks assigned, such as, last year was a lot of looking into ranked choice voting and spending time researching and reading about it, reaching out to the other clerks that may do this for their local elections, and attending meetings. And the same was done when looking into an election commission. I've been with the city for 24 years, working hard, and I hope and request that I be reappointed for another three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Any questions or comments from the councillors? Councillors, have any questions or comments about Eileen? Councillor Prozinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got hand cramps trying to write how many different things you were doing over here, and a lot of them we know about and a lot of them we don't. My hat's off to you, Eileen, for doing what you do with what you have. And I know that you've been understaffed for a lot of your time. you've been understaffed for a lot of your time, and you've had to do a lot of juggling to get things done. I know you and your family have committed themselves to the city loyally for many, many years, and I personally appreciate everything that you and your family have done for the city. I am a strong supporter of you and your job, and will vote in your favor to continue that work. Thank you.
And if I may interject, if those of you have not seen my email, I have hired a new assistant city clerk for the Elections Office, and I can't wait until she starts as well on September 23rd.
Any other questions? Councilor Stott?
Thank you, President Hapworth, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for the walk down memory lane. A lot of those items, like the implementation of hybrid meetings, the new voting machines, definitely brought back some strong memories. It did ping a few questions in my mind. I'll try to organize these. I think I would like to start first with a comment that Counselor Fury made at the beginning of this meeting regarding his lovely gift of the flowers every year. I know I always get a view of those when I walk in as well, but I'm wondering if you could share with the team, a lot of the items that you shared with goals that you accomplished were tangible. I'm hoping if you can share any team building or motivating or thank yous that you do for the team and how you help build your employees in the office and grow them. As you mentioned, you have three departments, three offices, lots of people that report to you, so I'm kind of looking for those non-black-and-white items, but the tangible items that you do to help move or grow and motivate your team. Also, pinging off of that with the article that you shared earlier about elections and stress, I would love to hear how you can, or how you have helped alleviate some of that from your team that you have in the office and how you can, or how you kind of help work through that, that we're, you know, I think we definitely have a special history, and even before the national 2020 election stress that happened, we had our own little 2019 election stress that happened. So I think we're well aware of the additional stressors of that. So I'm curious what you do for your staff to help alleviate that.
Would you, okay to respond? Sure. So on, you know, team building and getting along with our staff, I think, you know, we, over the years, with people retiring, new people coming on, we've built a good, you know, group of employees. In terms of how to build that, we always tend to try to celebrate birthdays. We have a list of birthdays, and we're always bringing in, you know, cakes or, you know, breakfast stuff from AJ King to make sure, and, you know, send around a card to sign and making sure that, you know, that we all sign the card. We all try to pretend that we're surprising the person with the happy birthday celebration in the lunchroom, and, you know, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but we do that. A couple of people this year actually in our office got married, and we have little bridal showers for them in the lunchroom again, just for some decorations and some, you know, goodies, so we do that. I have taken my team, it's been a while, but I've taken them to the Muni Code when they have paint and zip for that, so I've taken them to do that for team building. You know, we make sure we work hard, but we play hard too. We laugh, we have some good laughs. We, I think we're all comfortable enough with each other that we share stories. I mean, it's hard not to when you're, you know, in the same room for hours with the same people. On Administrative Day, I try to buy something for them. It was, I think I gave them gifts of orchids last Administrative Day, and I have pictures of everybody holding their orchids, and some have brought them back to life, some are still trying to, some I'm not sure. And on Election Day, you know, I buy them all lunch, because I know that they're kind of stuck in their offices, so I make sure that somebody orders lunch for all of us. And in terms of alleviating the stress for Election Day, I've been trying to send, hasn't been often, but trying to send other employees to attend conferences about elections and other associations that we belong to so that they can not only, you know, do what I used to do and go to a lot of the conferences, but they can meet the people and they can share with them. There's been a lot of Zoom meetings with the state that they listen to. I mean, unfortunately, elections is just that. I think they are stressful, there's no doubt about it, but we try to do the best we can, and I always bring in as much help as needed for whatever, for whatever is needed during election time, to make sure that the work does get done, whether it's hiring 20 or 30 people like in 2020 we had up here, or, you know, a couple, like three or four people that we have now.
Thank you. If I may continue, I am curious especially about, so it's great to hear that it sounds like there's a lot of internal office collaboration and celebrating personal accomplishments and sending to training. I'd love to hear outside of the office, but also professional development with each other. I'm really curious if, just from my insights of a few simple times of, you know, posting agendas, actual physical posting of them, like can, how do I ask this? Is cross-training something that happens a lot? Like, do more than one person know how to do certain things in the office? Like, how are we building up our on-deck team in the clerk's office so anyone can really jump in and help?
Sure. There is cross-training, a lot of, a lot of, like, you know, Maureen started out in room three, went to room five, and now she's out in room one. I was out in room five, never worked out in room three, but I learned it over the years. Everybody in room three pretty much would be able to do somebody else's job if they are out. And, you know, whether, even though somebody might be responsible for birth, deaths, or marriages per se, they all should be able to know how to post a meeting, how to issue a yard sale permit, how to help somebody fill out a birth certificate or apply for marriage intention. It hasn't happened as much with the, there's one new person that's been there about a year in room five, and the other one, they've, you know, come out to help or cover the offices, but I try to make sure that there's at least two people out there, you know, at a time, especially if we are planning, you know, vacation times and such like that. So there is, I believe that I go in and I jump down in room five if there, one person is on vacation or sick and the other person had to go to someone, so I can jump in there and take over for them. And we're all, a lot of us are trained on the state computer, the VRIS, myself, Maureen, Amy, Marilyn, Alex. So I believe, you know, there can always be more, yes, but I believe there's enough to get through if somebody comes in and has a question, or they can find the answer, or find me.
Thank you. A few more, sorry. I guess I'm going to get a little more specific. My two big topics of goals that we've talked about a lot are the Agenda Software, which you reviewed, the timeline and the training, and the SharePoint, and the transparency of council documents. So while we did kind of get a bare-bones minimum process up with that, I do feel like it's bare bones, and I think it's disappointing that it didn't get kind of taken to the next step to make our council documents that we have more transparent to the public on a very regular basis, not leaving it up to the notation of a chair to state whether or not something should be shared. I always get extremely frustrated with our backup documentation being a scanned PDF that is not accessible. I'm hoping that the Agenda Software solves that, but knowing that there were the pain points with getting that implemented, was looking for kind of an interim solution of the SharePoint backup drive and that I just, while yes, the bare minimum happened, it's just disappointing that we don't have things like public comment in there for everyone to see. We don't have our backup documentation, I guess, just better shared in there. So that's kind of my comment about the SharePoint. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Yeah, I can say that when, I think, I believe when you were council president, you came in to ask us to do that, and it was not necessarily, in your words, to give us more work, but it was just to make it more accessible for the councillors. And instead of, you know, my manual tracking or my Excel spreadsheet for the tracking forms and for, you know, and the PDF that is scanned to the council chairs. So I, at that point, that was all I believed that to be was to, for the city council. I know there was some understanding on SharePoint. At any time, if anybody wants to sit down and teach me more about SharePoint, I don't know more than what I do know. If there's any training for that, can certainly do it. I know people have shared things with me, like Amanda on their stuff, but it's hard to just have something sent to me and try to read it and do it without sitting down, usually with someone doing it. I know that Maureen has done it more with her. Sometimes the councillor is just the council order and doesn't say much more than what the agenda says. So it's, I kind of feel, you know, it's sort of like a redundancy to put the council order on as backup, but it wasn't originally, you know, explained as something that that wanted to be taken off on, especially when I share, you know, I try to share my budget and my narratives and my, you know, when it comes to the narratives and to the goals, and I ask people for feedback or any questions, and I didn't, you know, so that is something that, if that was the intention and I'm not doing that, then I can certainly try to do that.
Yeah, and I guess just for a point of clarification is that, yes, it's great for the councillors to have access to it, but really the ultimate goal is to make the documents accessible to the public, not in the, you know, 200-page backup documentation folder or document. I'll move on to my, I guess, kind of last topic was the time. So a lot of the Agenda Software training happened and stopped and paused, and the tasks not anticipated as the reasoning for this, but yes, in 2023, there were definitely a few special elections that were not anticipated, but we do know there is a general regular cadence for elections and schedules, and they're going to come, whether we want them or not, they happen on a regular basis. So I would not consider an election a task not anticipated. I am curious, as a follow-up from the budget meeting and conversation there, I think I'm repeating just a lot of what I said there, but one of the items that I asked and then put an order in after was for a request for marriages performed at City Hall and that data, and I'm wondering when that could be expected to review?
Was reading. I will get together what I can, but it was one into committee, and if you want to bring up, I don't remember, was it Government Services or such? So I was in, planning on, I didn't have it done to just give to you, I knew that it was an order that went into committee, and you want to do a commit, you know, I know that an order was done, I was just waiting for a committee meeting to be set.
Okay, so we can just schedule the meeting and you'll, okay, thank you.
I'll get some more questions in just a minute. I think that what we see here is we see an enormous, enormous amount of work that has to be done in the city clerk's office on a weekly basis and on a daily basis. And I think to Counselor Prozinski's point, there's not anybody, I think, in the city who has worked harder over the last two and a half decades to give to the city their efforts. Battery Commander told me in the Army once that if a lieutenant, a lieutenant should know what's happening in the motor pool, but if a lieutenant's working in the motor pool on a daily basis and something's wrong in that platoon, that there's nobody deciphering the intent of the commander, there's nobody planning to ensure that people have the resources they need or getting the training that they need. And I assume, and I want to speak for Counselor Stott, but I assume that's the line of questioning, that's what that's getting at, is how are we developing the people within, within the clerk's office so that you can, so you are able to decipher the intent of 11 people? I understand this is very difficult, 11 people who have things that they would like to see happen without micromanaging. How are we stepping back from that a little bit to develop the people underneath us and ensure that, you know, people have the things that they need to get the job done? I think that's probably what the crux of some of these questions are, is that we've, there's an enormous amount of work there, and we've reached this crescendo, I think, of the things that are coming down upon the city clerk's office across the entire Commonwealth. And how do we move forward with that? We have, like, Agenda Software has to get adopted at some point. We have to make these documents accessible, these, like, we cannot, for everybody's sanity, you included in your office, there's a lot that needs to get done, and if we continue to do things by just, like, just blunt force going after it as hard as we possibly can, something's going to break at some point. I think that's probably the worry around some of that. So that's just my perspective looking at this right now as we, as we continue this conversation. Counselor Masilo?
Thank you, President. Yeah, that's pretty much my feeling too. We run great elections in Salem, and I know we do because we have to, right? And I know that that is the primary focus of the office, and it should be. We need to hold bulletproof elections. They have to be correct, and they are, and you do an excellent job with that. What gets dropped, though, is the city council stuff, and I think that's, that's what we're hearing tonight. And so, in the same vein that you bought two pieces of equipment to help you get through all that mail-in voting, and it saves so much time, the Agenda Software is supposed to do that too, and that's the frustrating part. All of this stuff, the transparency of the documents for subcommittee meetings, all of that is supposed to be taken care of with the Agenda Software. And so, and even creating minutes afterward, it should just be like, it does it, because during the meeting, you're doing the checkboxes and all that, like, it should all flow from that. And so it's frustrating after spending, I mean, I know you spent time looking at the software, but Counselor Stott and I also spent time from our workdays to go through this stuff and to figure out what the best fit was, and then it was purchased and then nothing was happening. And I know that you're trying to get training, but it just doesn't feel like a priority. And that's the frustrating part, because I know it's going to be life-changing. It's going to be life-changing. And so, that's just my frustration here.
I hear your frustration, and I feel the frustration as well, and I'm trying not to make excuses. It's, it's hard when, you know, you have an agenda deadline on a Tuesday, you get ready for a meeting, I'm processing on a Friday, I have to get things up to the mayor on a Monday, he has up to, or the mayor has up to 10 days to sign something, I get it back, I have to finish processing that, and that's not going to change with Agenda Software, but at the same token, once that gets done, it's a little bit of a relief, not many days in a row, and then it's agenda deadline again. It's not, I'm not even, I'm putting elections aside. The only time that I get that extra breathing room is on a five-week month, and I'm going to be honest, so it's, that's part of the difficulty, and also, you know, just, you know, getting into work one day and then, like, you know, the solicitor needs some research done or something. It's not just that my, you know, as much as I try to say, okay, my day is just going to do this. And that is frustrating, I think, for all of us. I would, I, you know, my plan was to have Agenda Software up and running, and I'm not trying to, I understand elections are elections, except for the special elections they are planned for, but just if you look at a calendar, which I do all the time in terms of that, and then there's a, you know, might be a joint public hearing, and then processing that, there's just not a lot of time, a block of time that I feel as though I can, I can take that to just do that. For the shared drive, I will go back. I, I mean, I've been here for 24 years, I know what I know, I don't know what I don't know. Always up, I can learn things, but if I'm not, I'm not, you know, a Facebook or a TikToker, I don't know that stuff. That's kind of past my prime, but.
Like, I mean, I get that. Is there a way that Maureen could take the lead on the Agenda Software and do the training and take the lead and then, and then teach you, which will reinforce what she learned?
And then, and then teach you, which will reinforce what she learned?
It's, it's kind of like, it's, I, I, it's very hard to say that, it really is. Cause we really work together on, and all this stuff, everything that gets done. It's almost like the both of us together doing our portion of the agenda. It's not like I'm doing all of it and she's not or, you know.
Right, except the agenda software should be easing up all of that, right? The lead-up time to the actual printing of the agenda is shortened because it's taken care of in the software.
Like, it's just, again, and I know it's been a couple of years, it's just, it's, it is, it's just learning it. I just wish, you know, people could, you know, kind of see what, you know, we do on a daily basis. And I'm not, again, I'm not, you know, trying to butt heads, I'm just, I'm trying to say what, what it is. You know, when I interview, or I'm not interviewing, when I send out a, you know, a mass Google email to other clerks. I mean, a lot of them still use word processing. I mean, they're still using Microsoft Word and I'm trying not to. I was trying to lean on them to find out what they use to get done and maybe go there to show them.
Plenty of others that use the, the agenda software, right?
There's, that I know of three in Massachusetts now, not when we started. It's just, it is, it's just the time. And I, and I understand it will save time, trust me, I, I'm all for that, I love that. I just need to block out and maybe we can, um, publish your brain, you know, brainstorm like afterwards, maybe what, what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. I mean, it's just frustrating because I know it's going to save you time. My, you know, my other concern is that it's, it sort of automates the process. And I'll tell you, it was scary at the beginning of the year when Maureen was out. And then to think that you, when you were out for part of that, it was frightening to think no one else knows how to do this stuff. Like, how were we, how was this working? So.
It was hard to have two people out at the same time, you know. And I did get behind, I'm caught up now, but I think anybody, any department like look at, and I'm not trying to point fingers or, you know, it's just show out like when planning was down a person, they had to have, or finance was down people. They had third-party people come in, contracted services to come in and help them. I don't have that. I mean, I know finance had munis people come in. I know that we had just signed something to pay a bill for, you know, I, I think when Tom Devine was something with whatever he was working with. I mean, I don't have that to have somebody that specializes in just elections or software gender to just come in and contract and, and help me do it. The one thing that did really help was my two days of onsite training. I mean, I learned a lot in those two days. I'm not, even though I don't do a lot of technology, I'm certainly not, I, I have to say I'm intelligent enough, not dumb, to, to learn that and I can pick it up. I mean, I can do it. It's just really having that, that, that time and that, that training.
I just, you know, I can't state enough that this has to be a priority. It's going to save time, it's going to save money. We've spent all this money for two years, nothing at this point, yeah.
And I, I understand and I was, I'm willing to leave it up to the council if you want to continue paying for that. I mean, I'm not going to lie, I mean, with our early voting starting in October and still trying to schedule people all the way through November. I, I, you know, and, you know, my October, I have two back-to-back council meetings and then two weeks of early voting and then into November. And then, you know, we have to get UOCAB is in, we have to finalize elections by 10 days after the November 5th, so November 15th. And then we, I might get pulled for an audit again, which I did a couple of years ago. And I had to do an audit for the state on almost like a recount for elections. So, I mean, I don't feel like, you know, anything's going to come out for air, almost, you know, until after, you know, Thanksgiving. It's, it's always been that way on a, on a 20, on a presidential election. And 2020 just made it that much harder.
Thank you. And I think this, this does speak to the amount of, the amount of work there is to do in the office and the need to develop people to do these things. Cause there's, there's, there's no end to that, to that work. But yeah, we have an assistant city clerk for elections, we have assistants, we now do. We have an assistant city clerk for the council. This is just, you know, this is part of, I guess, the part of being a department head. And that's what I think some of these questions are probably getting at. I think that we have a few hands up right now. I want to go to Counselor Verella, Counselor Jurislow, Counselor Harvey, and then Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Chair Hepworth. So just to bounce off what we were just talking about with Counselor Morcello. When it comes to the training of the agenda software, I, I kind of find your rebuttal a little frustrating. That being a department head, you need to train your staff to be able to do it. If you were not there to do the day-to-day, we understand the office knows needs to run and still needs to operate. But training the, the staff you have to do that, and I know that within the 11 brilliant minds you have, there's got to be someone that could pick up and help when it comes to the formulation of the agenda software. So that was just a comment. Moving forward with just some overarching goals and short-term goals. Concerning the DEI Director Spanish English Language, I know that's, you know, one, one issue we want to really, you know, bolster when it comes to addressing the needs of our.
I didn't hear what you started with, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Sorry. So when it comes to the long goals and short-term goals that were listed in the budget, when it comes to working with our DEI Director as far as the Spanish classes that are offered now with, with your staff, is that being implemented? Are the staff taking to that? Because I know, again, when it comes to our most economically disadvantaged residents, they tend to be Spanish-speaking. And I know with just voter registration, like, we, we need to make sure that our most economically disadvantaged population is engaged in the, in just in elections in general. And I guess I'll lead to that question is, what is your office doing to engage more of our residents that are not engaged in voting?
In terms of engagement, in the beginning, when there, you know, there was, I did a lot of voter education and some voted training way back when, it hasn't happened in a while. The, I, I've done classes and I have, when I had somebody that spoke Spanish, we did a voting, a class in Spanish for voters. I advertised it, we had very little turnout on that. In terms of currently, right now, I don't have a formulated plan. I'm hoping with the new assistant city clerk for elections, who is bilingual and also is, seems to be very proficient in, you know, marketing skills and social media, that, that will really take off. And, and to you, and just going back, you know, in terms of you, like, looking into an election commission. And I'm not trying to, I love elections, but I really do believe that it's, it is time for the city to have an election commission. I, I can't, I can't physically, not, not only just me, but, you know, my group of people, even if though there's, you know, to do everything that's needed to be done. I mean, I have vote education, I have high school registry, I have all these things that I want to do every year on my goals. And, and every year they just seem to, to go by. But I think it's time for an election commission and, and I, I don't know. I know we started going home on that and it kind of slowed down. I know the mayor is waiting for some information from the HR manager in terms of, of costs. I mean, that shouldn't, I mean, I, I don't know what, you know, in terms of benefits, what that costs. But it's going to be, you know, some, a salary plus a cost of whatever benefits are. And I really believe that will make a huge difference in, in what can get done for a city council versus, and, and elections separately. It's, it's really at that point.
And, and thank you for saying that. As you know, I'm one of the biggest proponents when it comes to elections commission and I'd like to see that happen as soon as possible. However, I know what's in front of us tonight and your job description handles both. So I think just going forward, I'd like to see more of your staff being more up and up when it comes to the day-to-day. Like I said, if you were not there, could that office efficiently run? I believe it can, but could it be even better? And that's when it comes to agenda software. I'd, I'd like to see you have more time to have that be that department role to oversee things. And I think that's why I think when it comes to the agenda software, this is one of the biggest priorities that I would like to see.
Before we move on, we've heard, we've heard a few things here tonight. So we've heard some questions around technology adoption, public document accessibility, DEI Director, leadership in the department. I do want to be mindful, and this isn't in reference to anyone's questions here, but as we move into more questions, I just do want to be mindful that we are evaluating the performance of a, of a city employee in a public body. So if we can avoid moving through repetitive comments and, and questions as we move forward, again, not referencing anything that's happened already, please just be mindful of, of what we're here to do and the seriousness of that and the sensitivity of that. And, you know, just think through the, the rest of the role and other things that we're, that we're expecting from that role and questions that you have. So I'll move on to Counselor Jurislow.
Thank you. Eileen, I think you do a fabulous job with all you have to do, being a new counselor. I've pestered you like day in and day out with emails and questions. You've always answered my questions and emails very properly and concise. So I thank you for that. And I can't imagine how many emails you get a day from all of us here tonight. It has to be a lot for you to do. I want to ask you, how many hours do you think you do above and beyond 40 hours? I've worked with you for many years on elections. I see when you start in the morning at five o'clock on election day and when you end probably 11 o'clock or later on election days. But I don't think people understand, back when I was in college, I worked in room three after elections, just to help out, what actually takes place before an election and what takes place after election. When you say you have like two elections a year, leading up to an election, I know how much work goes into that. And after election, how much work you have to do. Maybe you can touch upon that to show people here tonight, how many hours you actually put into these days of election, not just saying, we have two elections a year, it's not just two days a year. It's probably weeks leading up to it and weeks afterwards. Thank you, and I think you're, you're doing a great job, thank you.
Sure, thank, thank you. Yes, election day is not just one day a year, although, you know, a lot of people, you know, feel that way and they should. Their voters, they get to go out on that day and vote or now that they have options. There is things that we need to do in terms of getting supplies ready for elections. Now with vote by mail, every piece of paper that comes in has to get timestamped for an application. All ballots have to get mailed up, they have to be inputted into, into our VRIS with a date. They, we have to wait to the ballots come in or, and then we have to get them packaged up with an outer envelope, the inner envelope and, and get those out as, as well as getting new, you know, applications in. When a ballot comes back, they have to be open, we have to check to make sure that the person signs it. We make sure that they, although we're not handwriting experts, that there's similar signatures. We have to timestamp them, we have to put them back, we have to put them in the computer as, as logged in. We have to sort them by ward and precinct, by address. And, you know, so that's just for one ballot. With early voting in person required by the state, you know, whether it's the one week or the two weeks, which always includes a weekend, Saturday, Sunday through Friday on a primary and two weekends, 14 days total for that. They're like holding like 14 or seven mini elections every day. So we're getting in early, we're setting up our, our totes. For those, we can use electronic poll pads to check people in. We go over, make sure everything is running smoothly. I do have a crew that works, we get them, we have to log them in as voting in person, the same thing, whether it's mailed in or that. They get time stamped in, they get, they get, make sure there's a signature on it, they get entered in the computer. So we're doing that for a lot, long time. And after an election is done, well, we, we wait, you know, till all the precincts are in. And then we start doing hand counts for any ballots that could make it to the polls by eight o'clock. It depends what election it is, whether we have to wait certain days for more ballots to come in. We're scanning voting lists, we're, we're making sure like the ones that recorded as write-ins are real write-ins, they're not Mickey Mouse or, you know, Donald Duck. And, you know, we have to adjust those numbers, we have to, now the hand counts in, we have to research provisional ballots of anybody's on, on either voting list and they think they should be, we have to research that. And then, you know, we, we, and then we have to finalize elections and then to put all that away. And, you know, we'll start again for November, whether it's, you know, a state or a local election. In between that, there's thousands of, I didn't bring the number up with me, of petitions, especially on a state election year, that have to come in and get certified by my elections office. I do have somebody from another room jump in and help them out with that. Cause like stacks like that come in, especially when they're a state election with ballot questions. And we certify all of those and then the people, I have to pick them up, but we send them back. And in between that, we're still having last day to register vote. It just, it kind of just goes on and on and on, which again, I think, I hope, you know, might ignite the, reignite the election commission process. But, you know, we're here weekends, we're here nights, we come in early. So it, it's hard to, to say how many hours. But, you know, there was probably like, you know, for, on 2020 election, you know, the overtime of what a union person makes was probably more than what some of the other salary people make. So it kind of goes to that fact, because we are required a lot of five o'clock nights and certain nights by the state.
Good, Counselor Jurislow. Counselor Harvey.
Again, same position as Counselor Jurislow. Haven't been around here long enough, but what I have seen, I, I admire the amount of work you do. I, I know I've said it multiple times going into your office that there's no way I would want to be doing it. But I guess my, coming from a construction background, coming from somebody that's been always hands-on, how much delegation do you do in the office with your staff? So that you're alleviating yourself from other tasks, so that you can concentrate on what you really need to be concentrated on? And the only reason I'm asking that, and the only reason I'm bringing that up, I found it very hard. Okay, I'm close to the end of my career and I've been told for the past six months, all I'm supposed to do is point my finger and delegate and have guys and the crew do what they need to do. And I find it very difficult because I've always been hands-on, wanting to do it myself. You know, I delegate it to somebody and 15 minutes later, I'm over there trying to do what they're supposed to be doing. So I, I just feel like, and I think that's kind of some of the comments that were made, you know, how do you engage with your staff? How do you train your staff? I think it's more, are you delegating to them to have certain tasks that they're doing to alleviate and free up some of your time? And like I said, I know it's difficult. It just sounds to me like it's, it's always like, well, you're always, when you're making your, your comments, you're saying, well, I, I got to do this and I got to do that and I could just, but you also, you have 11 people in your office or 11 people in the three offices down there. So it just sounds to me like we need to teach you how to delegate a little bit more because I know it's very difficult when you've been doing it for so long. And, and that's just a comment that I had, thank you.
So just, so there is, not to correct, but there's, when I'm at a full capacity, there's eight of us. But the, the room three, I would have to say, you know, that, that is a lot of self-sustaining by itself other than certain questions that come up that customers have that they can't answer or affidavits that I have to sign or, you know, planning board decisions. So I, I would say that that is, that does not need a lot of delegation, they know what they're doing. I mean, all office, both offices know what they're doing. And in terms of the elections office, I had delegated to, you know, for. And in terms of the Elections Office, I had delegated to, you know, for, having somebody learn how to schedule the poll work, is how to schedule the early voting schedules, how to, you know, do certain things that I did, and that happened for a couple of years, and that person's no longer there, so it's, I am doing it again. So I, but yes, but the buck stops here, and I do need to make sure that things are getting done correctly without micromanaging, but I need to know what's going on. You know, my name's on the official election results. My name's on, most of it is on the Council Minutes. So I do have to make sure things are going correctly. It's not that I don't trust anybody, but I think it just comes with learning, and that's why, you know, currently, you know, Maureen's doing more, some of the minutes, she's doing more of the joint public hearings, doing more of the meetings, and unfortunately, it's just sometimes it's trial by fire, and you just put into it, like a new person coming in, that it's just going to be coming in like, you know, right before a presidential, a little better way to learn, you know? So.
Counsel Davis?
Thank you, President Hapworth. I was hoping you could share your thoughts on how you view your role and, I guess, the boundaries of your role when it comes to the policies that we talk about on the Council, the votes that we take, the statements that we make, and essentially how much you view, you know, your feelings about certain ideas, policies, as part of the process, as part of, you know, something to be kind of considered throughout that process.
Can you give me an example? Could you be more specific, please?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, on any given issue that we're talking about on the Council, do you feel that, I guess, I don't know how to make a specific example without kind of going into, you know, specific instances or details that I, you know, I think we wanted to kind of avoid, but I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, there's certainly been instances, you know, that I've been a part about, that we've talked about, where, you know, I think people kind of had their votes questioned or talked about by you, and your feelings were kind of shared about policies. So I guess, in just kind of understanding, you know, for my sake too, because I'm a relatively new counselor, just kind of those different roles and how we kind of distinguish between city staff and, you know, leaders and legislators, you know, kind of where you see your role in the process of our, you know, kind of agenda items and the specific policies we're talking about.
I'll let you respond to that if you'd like, Eileen, but I would add that the job description of a city clerk does not include, I understand what you're getting at, Counsel Davis, the job description of the city clerk, which is what we're here to discuss, does not include her opinions of a topic or an issue. And if they're isolated, questions or comments or concerns, we can, we can hopefully would deal with those behind closed doors. But if you'd like to respond to that, Eileen, you can, or you could choose not to.
All I can say that any vote and any statements that are made on the Council floor are public records. It's public records.
Thank you. I also wanted to kind of build off a discussion earlier when it comes to voter engagement. You know, I feel very strongly, you know, we look at the numbers of votes coming from, you know, the Point neighborhood, and, you know, they're abysmal. You know, I think it's frankly kind of an embarrassment for the city that there's this amazing, you know, multicultural working class neighborhood, you know, that clearly hasn't been engaged with enough. And I think that's, you know, that the Council and the mayor kind of share that responsibility. I think my frustration in your response and saying, you know, you don't have a plan for that, is concerning, and it feels to be a trend through much of what we've discussed tonight. I'm hearing a lot of, you're overwhelmed, there's a lot on your plate. And I think we all believe you, we've all been, you know, had jobs that we had too many things to physically do, but I think the concern is kind of, what do we do going forward? And when we're hearing, there's not a plan, when we're hearing, you know, you feel like you're delegating already as much as you need to, I guess, I guess my, I don't feel confident that, you know, some of these concerns that haven't been addressed in the past few years will be in the next three years. So just.
Yes, I can respond to that. So I'm just going back past the last three years, when I first started here in 2018, and still currently, even though I don't say it, I've been involved in the Latino Coalition. I've been invited to meetings. I've attended meetings there. I've talked to them. I talk to VOSs. I speak with Salem State University, the Civic Engagement, Cynthia Lynch there. I talk all the time to the people that work in One Two, Help Me, how can I get, you know, people to come out to vote? You know, I've worked with them, and that's where I had the training down in Spasio, I believe it was. So, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm just going back to the past three years. I work a lot with the Latino Coalition in the beginning to try to, you know, get back that divide. I feel as though, I mean, I think Lucy was here not that long ago, and felt a lot of that has been, you know, not fixed, but, you know, they're a lot happier, a lot happier. But I will say, overall, in the whole state, all the clerks are frustrated and voted turnout. It's not just in one particular precinct. It's overall, the overall turnout has been abysmal. I mean, we do the, you know, the impersonally voting, and some people don't even have anybody that comes in to vote. It is, it is sad, and we all try to think of what we can do to get the vote out. You know, it's also the grassroots efforts of the candidates, and, you know, I don't believe I got that many or any, like pamphlets in the mail for the past election, but, so I don't want you to get the wrong impression that I'm not working with the Latino, the Point area. I work a lot with them. I'm very close and speak a lot with Prola Pagaro, To lose, Altocasi, they are all, you know, people, and they work for me. But it is hard to get other people that want to work the elections that are bilingual. I started a mentoring program with Salem High School, with the Activities Director there. I don't think they have a Latino club anymore, but I got four students out of that, even though it went throughout all the principals in the high school. And they've all stayed, and now they're going off to college. I feel like they're like, you know, my baby's growing up. But, you know, so I'm trying to keep with that and hoping, especially with the new person coming in that is bilingual, that that will help. I actually, somebody's sister, one of the Spanish students, bilingual students that have worked for me who's going off to college, his sister is now doing it. So I have been working on mentoring relationships as such as that.
Thank you. That's helpful. I mean, I think that, just to kind of close that up, I think that, you know, these are huge problems. I think that no one's saying they need to be kind of fixed overnight, but I think when I hear kind of very specific proposals on how to kind of make headway on these kind of items, that's exciting, right? To have someone else join the team that's bilingual is great. I don't think it's the answer to kind of the whole problem, and I think, you know, I'm missing kind of what's going to, kind of what the plans are to help you be less overwhelmed, how to kind of manage times that these other kind of items can be, you know, prioritized and worked on, to kind of clarify my point.
A part-time person in Room One might help. There used to be three out there. There's two, there's been a lot of, like any other department, shrinkage of employees just due to, you know, budgets over the years. But, you know, I'm looking forward to working with the new person, you know, to, you know, yes, there's probably going to be a good year of training there, because you don't go through a cycle, an election cycle, since everything's related, you know, getting out the census, getting them back, whether you're going to be activated and activated with the voter confirmation card, you know, get all those in. You know, there's a whole cycle, and it's a good year of, you know, going from January to December. But I'm looking forward. I mean, the same, you know, hope that I had way back when, you know, just looking to rejuvenate that.
So we'll go to Counsel Cohen, and I do want to just take a minute to talk about moving us towards a motion and moving that discussion to that direction. Counsel Cohen?
Thank you, President Hapworth. So when I moved to Salem in 2008, I did two things. First two things, I joined the Y, and I signed up to work the elections. That's how we met. I worked at Pioneer Terrace, and then eventually Saltonstall, and that closed. Some of my best friends in Salem today are there. It's really good community, really well-run, just a comical aside. When I ran at large in 2019, they were a little short-staffed at the Saltonstall, and Marie asked me if I could work the polls. I said she should call you or Cheryl or someone, and then her assistant told me that she voted against me so that I could work the polls the next year. I do want to address a couple of things, even though it's similar to what's come up. It's a little bit different. When I worked for the city in 2013 or 15, I couldn't believe that the one person who was the Water Department sat on my left, and the one person who was the Trash Department sat on my right. We're a really lean city government as far as workers. Our DPS department has 33 people out of 40. We're very short in engineering and electric. It's really hard for everyone to retain staff. When I was a senior-level manager at Circuit City, I used to bring my team in, just, and, you know, we'd have a, start our team building, as Counsel Stott said, where I would say, hey, we have 10 pounds of poop, and we have a two-pound bag, and the bag has a hole in it. How are we going to get as much of that in the bag? And when I was doing the recycling, you know, I walked the whole city during the grace period and measured, you know, everyone's recycling. And the city, believe it or not, only about 57% of the residents in Salem recycled. So my goal was to increase that, and we did about 20%, but the Point was 35%. And so I spent a lot of time in the Point, and it increased by the highest percentage. It never got to where the affluent neighborhoods were. And as a couple of the councilors have said, I do have a lot of concern when our more marginalized communities are not represented in the vote, because, you know, that's access. And this is ongoing. When I was the Chair of the Then No Place For Hate Committee, I was involved in the MOU process with the LLC, and Mayor Driscoll, and Lucy in the Point neighborhood, and I was disappointed that we didn't get that agreement. So I don't have a specific answer, but I do believe that this idea Counsel Harvey had of delegating, for example, just something I was thinking about while people were talking, is when I worked for the city, you know, when you go to the farmer's market, they always allow a city department to have a table, you know, whether it's the Health Department doing, you know, blood pressure, or, you know, sustainability, when we were doing the solarize. And, you know, sometimes to get people engaged, you have to go to where they are. So just wanted to mention that. I think that's really important in the process. I am not kind of like you. I don't understand technology. I do want to express that it's difficult for me. I have dyslexia, and for me to actually like coordinate and do the technology for the meetings, I know you gave me quite a training, but it didn't really help, and I couldn't run some of the subcommittee meetings if it wasn't for a couple of the councilors who were able to, you know, manage the technology. And so I do understand that for, you know, people like me, and maybe for you, that technology is a barrier that may not be for other people. But really wanted to just bring up this idea that when we look at our, the associates that we work with, you know, we need to look at everyone in the lens of competence and commitment. You know, when you start a new job, you're highly committed. You can't wait to do it. You have no idea what you're doing, so you don't have a lot of competence. But there are people who have been in the job for 10 years who have never got promoted, who are very competent, but they're not real committed. And those people, you know, to Counsel Harvey's point, sometimes the way you get them to be committed is to involve them in some kind of process. Give them a project, make them the captain of that project, whatever it may be. So I'm just encouraging that, you know, as part of this thing, because I know 11 people to you on a day-to-day basis doesn't seem like enough, but maybe there's some people who, if they were given a little bit of extra responsibility, would step up in a way that you didn't expect them to. Thank you.
Can I respond to that? First, I just want to say, technology, I wouldn't say it's a barrier for me, I'd just say it's limited, if I can learn it. At one point, I was the computer person in our office way back when. But in terms of what your point to giving somebody a project, I think I would have to agree with that, because with only two full-time people on the Elections Office, you know, there had to be more done with less people. And I have to say, my two full-time people there really did step it up. I put one person in charge of the new labeling machine and the opening machine, and the other person was in charge of getting the Excel spreadsheet ready for the labeling machine. They did it every day. They did it without me having to ask them. The person that I put in charge of the drop boxes went out on their own. I didn't even know they left and came back. So I think we're really working towards that and trying to put people in charge, now that one's been there a while, of certain aspects of the job, and waiting to turn some of the other stuff over. So I do agree with putting somebody, giving them a little something, and I sent that one person from that office, one person from Room Three, out to a conference where there was something on by the records on elections, and they came back and they loved it, they got a lot out of it. So, you know, those things are going to continue. So thank you.
I just want to follow up. I was also kind of suggesting, like, you know, when I was the manager, and there was a task that I was responsible for as the manager, but I didn't want to personally do it for whatever reason, I would actually say in that group meeting, like, hey, who wants to take charge of this? It may be something that you're not necessarily like listing what the tasks are, and is someone willing to step up? It's more like, you might be surprised at how people take to something, you know, by making it more open-ended.
I agree, but I also try to lean on their strengths and weaknesses and give them tasks also based on that, whether it's more computer savvy or more, you know, something else. So I think it's a combination of both. But thank you, absolutely.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing today towards a motion is I think that the 11 people in this room, or the 11 councilors, or 10 here, I guess, right now, are never going to make your job easier, Eileen. And I think that we can sit here, we can try to figure out how to solve these problems and how to make things easier in your office. We're never going to get to that point. I think what a lot of councilors are asking for is a couple of big things here, and I think, I think the technology is a big one. So the agenda software, SharePoint, the accessibility of public documents is another one. There's been some mention of customer service, but not telling you how to do customer service, but just ensuring that there's a, there's a plan for implementing that, and that everyone in the office understands that. DEI was mentioned briefly. I think just a collaboration with the DEI Director, not trying to micromanage any goals in that office, or to say there's anything wrong in that office, but just to say that there needs to be more collaboration between the DEI Director and the city clerk, and then just collaboration with the mayor's office. That's my perspective, but I'll open up the floor to others. I think where we can go from here is, we can certainly reappoint, we can certainly not reappoint. I have never worked in a job, if the will were not to reappoint, I don't think it is. I've never worked in a company that didn't communicate in an official manner what the goals were. Every goal that we've discussed here has been sort of informal, and it's been maybe in a public meeting, it's been questions from 11 different councilors, but it's never been communicated formally. So the other option that we have here is... So the other option that we have here is we can hold the appointment until a date certain and communicate some clear measurable goals and then move from there. But that's up to this committee how they want to handle that. If we do decide to do that, I do have a couple of goals here that I've written down. I can hand them out to you all, but I want to just get some, the feeling of the room around that topic. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. And I also want to thank the city clerk for the clarity on what an enormous job it is. We've had discussions in council on how the elections have grown, which led to the, to the conversations on an elections commission because, you know, early voting and everything, everything has expanded. And I've also appreciated the ideas and concerns expressed here. And I'm not going to go on because I agree with them and I don't need to reiterate everything that was said. I do think I also read, read the room that it would be probably a good path forward to, I don't know if it's called keeping it in committee. This is kind of, kind of an unusual, an unusual venue here tonight. But just so we'd have a chance to, the good ideas of the goals that were expressed here, just to put some time in place and have, you know, the new Assistant Clerk for Elections settle in, see what they bring to the table and what ideas they may have. And I agree with the topics to, to put in place as sort of goals and to see what plan we might have of the voter engagement, the technology adoption, transparency for the public on documents and transparency for public comment. I get a lot of questions on, you know, what do you get? What have you heard? And I do like the idea of more DEI collaboration. I feel I've personally benefited from DEI training and guidance that I've gotten here for the city of Salem as a counselor. And I also would want to, and for us, to schedule the committee meeting for the marriage data. And I think it just seems like that would put us all in a more, you know, more positive, comfortable place, you know, in making the reappointment. And I also would suggest for any timeline, being mindful of the points that you made, that we have a very big election looming and it won't really clear up for any of this to happen until probably the end of November. So I would think, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to realistically push that out to maybe, you know, one of our meetings in February. So that was just what I would like to offer about, you know, what I'm hearing tonight. And again, I do appreciate, you know, the long list of, you know, accomplishments and responsibilities and hard work that goes into your job and your, and by your team as well.
Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I'm not sure if that was a motion to keep it in committee until February, but I would like to second that if it was. And also to note that, just I guess for those listening along, like, I really don't feel that these are anything, any new topics. Definitely having a little bit of deja vu of these conversations coming up during the 2021 reappointment, the 2022 salary review meeting, and then all of our budget review meetings. So I think, you know, looking back at those, perhaps it was hard to identify, to not have deadlines associated with certain things. I work best with a task list and deadlines and I know things have to get done, just like elections have specific dates and times and they come. I think we need to have these, you know, specific goals that we can come with a consensus with or present it to, to have continued conversation. But I agree with that motion and would like to second.
So I've, I've written up a couple of goals here. This is just my own first draft, so it's up to the committee how they want to deal with these. But I'll just pass these out here. You guys can take a look at them. We can go down one by one. And if anyone wants to remove, add, change, happy to, happy to discuss that, so. Does anyone like to take a recess at this time?
I'd like to move for a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess, seconded by Counselor Barilla. All those in favor, we're in recess. I wanted on this list here, do you want to just sort of talk about what you have here? Counselor Stott.
I just had a quick question. Were these shared with the city clerk prior to this?
Have not been shared.
One by one's a good idea.
Yep. So the, the first one here is technology adoption and agenda management. Goal to implement agenda management software for more efficient meeting organization and public transparency, including but not limited to training of councilors, department heads, mayor's staff and IT. Work with IT to understand who is responsible for support of the software and where questions should be directed. Provide department heads, mayor's office and councilors with the process. Video written to, for submitting city council agenda items and the measure be fully transitioned to new agenda software by first meeting in January 2025. Any questions around that? I guess from Eileen or from anybody else in the, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I just want to say that to the point I previously made that January 2025 is, might be a little too soon to implement this with how busy, you know, the fall is with the election season. So February is a suggestion.
Any thoughts around that point? Okay, so the only, Counselor Murso.
I would like to hear Ms. Simon's thoughts, please.
Sure.
Yep. I would, I would have to concur with Counselor Merkel. I, I, you know, we just talked about this going on for two years. And now you're putting it in on January. I, you know, I do feel with the election and, and the holidays coming up in December, I really do feel that January 2025 is, I will say that I don't feel that that is reasonable or doable for me.
I'll add that the previous goal was, I think, June 2024, right? We talked about previously and the goal was set.
July 1st.
Was set in, in January of 2024 to have it by the past summer. I'm fine moving it to February, but I just, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to pretend that this is not a reasonable goal because this has been years in the making.
I believe that you had asked for July 1st to learn the agenda software and that's why we had onsite training.
Yeah. So if the will is February 2025, we can move forward on that. Is there any other questions or concerns around the technology adoption, agenda software? Can we move to the next one? Public document availability. Counselor Jerzlo.
I want to make a comment. I agree with Counselor Merkel that January is too.
Sure. Yeah, we can move.
Holidays, you have to.
Yep. And we've, we've moved on to February as the, as the date on that. The next one is public document accessibility. So improve public access to official documents through consistent SharePoint, use of SharePoint. Ensure all newly issued documents and meeting materials are uploaded to SharePoint within 48 hours of creation. Note this means that the chairs of committees and the council president must take a more active role in managing their folders on SharePoint. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Speaking from the experience of those on my right, I don't like that note that's in there. And this is probably my frustration with the limitation on the public document accessibility. I think it should be a task at the clerk's office similar to all of the other departments within the city. So the planning board, ZBA, traffic, like everybody that has public documents and accessibility, they have figured out how to create a system to just make them naturally be accessible. It should not be on the chair. We can maybe leave the council president in there, you know, to make and, take an active role in making sure it's being done. But this is kind of my frustration with taking it to the next step. You know, make like, what documents need to be accessible? What does the public need to see and how can we get it to them? And a piece of that is working with the other departments in the city to figure out how it happened. I took this up when I was council president and I met with Amanda. I met with other departments within the city to see how it happened. And I created a starting document and kind of handed it over and was really hoping for that next step of taking it over. But I do not think, I guess ultimately, I don't think that the chairs of the committees should be the ones responsible. The chairs of the committees should be knowledgeable of what's going on in their committees and make sure that stuff is done and kind of checking. But I don't think that they need to be actively in there managing because we have 11 councilors that change every two years. And that's an on us that is not manageable. We can't set goals for each counselor. We can't tell councilors that you have to go into SharePoint and manage your documents because that's not going to happen. So I think we need to make it a little more realistic.
Any more thoughts on that comment? Counselor Cohen.
Yeah, this was the point I was making during my comments. Also, all the committees are different and some meet quite often. And I think one of the values, when you look at the planning department, for example, is the continuity of information as, you know, kind of know, when I go somewhere, you know, where to look and how to find. So I'm agreeing with Counselor Stott.
Okay. Counselor Stott.
I would like to maybe suggest that, that note, that the note this means that the clerk's office works with other departments within the city to learn how to best manage this practice. I think that might be good to help work on perhaps two goals. A goal of obviously the technology development and accessibility, but also a goal of branching out and working collaboratively with other departments within the city as well. Kind of, you know, we talked a lot about team building internally, but also, you know, kind of team building and we're all on one team here in the city. And that, I think, is one way to, to help with that.
Can you restate that, that comment, that, what you want in there? Clerk must work with other city departments.
Yeah, the clerk must reach out to other city departments to learn best practices of SharePoint policies and procedures.
Clerk should collaborate with other departments. Any other comments on number two here? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth, just for clarity. And I agree with the points made by Counselor Stott that we're removing the chairs of committees, but keeping the council president active and also adding the clerk to work collaboratively with other departments. Am I clear on that?
Is that the way you were looking at it, Counselor Stott?
I don't think the council president needs to take an active role in managing, but can take an active role in overseeing. But I, I.
Overseeing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And as we, as we move forward, as comments are made, if you disagree with it, let, let everyone know and we'll continue moving forward with the assumption that all are in agreement if there's no disagreement on some of these points. Anything else on number two?
No, thank you. Yes, overseeing seems more appropriate than managing for the president's role.
And then, Eileen, if you, if there's anything you notice on, along the way here, just raise your hand and we can, we can. So number three, customer service enhancement. Establish customer service standards for public interactions. Develop a customer service policy in consultation with city officials and the DEI Director, the staff of the clerk's office and communicate the plan to all members of the clerk's office. Hold bi-monthly training sessions for staff to ensure these standards are understood and followed. Any questions, comments or concerns? Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President. I'm just remembering a conversation that Counselor Murso had with city clerk during the budget meetings about, you know, departments such as the clerk's office, engineering, whatever, that has a lot of customer interaction or resident interaction businesses, whatever. And just going to ask the clerk, if you keep a log, like how many people come in, interact with. And the reason I bring that up is, you know, with C-click fix, which I'm guessing you don't get a lot of C-click fix, you know, reports, it's actually enabled the city, the mayor and the finance department to reallocate resource. So, you know, quantifying how much you interact with the public might enable more resource, just a thought.
Make a comment. I also believe at that budget meeting, the mayor had stated that he was trying to formalize some type of matrix or something for all department heads to follow. So it's the same measurable policy, I guess.
Yeah, I would say, actually, if that's the case, then when, when you report back on that topic, you just say, here's the mayor's policy that's been communicated out and here's how I'm communicating out to the department head, to the, to the rest of the department. I think that's, that's fair. Counselor Jerzlo.
Thank you. I think bi-monthly is a little excessive. I think it's maybe monthly training. I remember working with the police department. We had monthly training, but I think bi-monthly.
Bi-monthly is every other month. So.
Twice a month. I was going to say it's a little too much. Thank you.
Anything else on the customer service part? And again, if there is a consistent policy within, from the mayor's office, that would be fantastic because the public should have a consistent experience. I think just the goal, in writing that, just the goal is that, that the employees in the, in the clerk's office just, just have a clear understanding of what the expectations are. And if those are already in place, then, then that's something you can, you can communicate as well. DEI inclusion integration. Integrate DEI principles into the office's operations and collaborate with the city's DEI director regularly. Measure balls to meet with the DEI director within 30 days and outline collaborative goals for the office and then participate in at least one citywide DEI training session or initiative within 60 days. I'm not sure if there's an opportunity to do those trainings or initiatives, but I, you know, I think just sort of seeing that as a, as a good faith effort would be good. And then just a collaboration with the DEI director, I think, would be important.
The 30 days and 60 days, I think that, that, you know, brings me right into the mix of, of voting season.
So we, I, I'm looking at that.
So I don't know if there's another way that we can do this.
With the will of the body is, I would, I would be happy just to remove that second bullet altogether and just meet with the DEI director and outline some goals. I think that sounds fair to me. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I support moving, removing within 60 days because we also don't know the DEI director's schedule along with the election. So I think it's reasonable to just remove it.
Both of them, counsel?
I would keep the, the meet with, meet with the DEI director within 30 days on here.
Yes, I was referring to the 60 days. I think she would probably have an appointment, but if it would be looking at the 30 days, if it would be helpful if that was 60 days and then remove the DEI training session within 60 days completely. I'd be interested to know if that would be helpful to the clerk's scheduling.
I think the meeting with the DEI director within 30 days is difficult to do with a new person coming on.
Yeah, that's why I suggested 60. So to change that one to 60 and then remove the 60 at the end. So changing the.
Just trying to figure that out.
So meet with the DEI director within 60 days.
But November 11th, that, you know, again, we're like, that's how, beginning of December, possibly.
This would not be an all-day meeting. It would be just a.
No, I know. I, I realize that. I just was hoping maybe by December, you know, the end of December would be more flexible.
Issues at the end of December on the group?
No, we want to do what will work, you know, for your department.
Just say end of year. Any other questions, comments or concerns on the DEI initiative?
Not go on the DEI, but back up on the public document accessibility. I see that that's open-ended. Do you have a deadline for that?
You'd just be reporting back to the council on what, on where you're at on that. If someone wants to put a, a less open-ended deadline on that, but this is, this is, this is the nominee or the, the reappointment would be held to a certain date, which that sounds like would be February. And it would be reporting back to the council at that time. Counselor Murso.
Thank you, President. I think that this one plays in with the first one. And if we're up and running in February, we'll have something set up for the SharePoint through that or a different system. So I just want to like, I don't want to put too much emphasis on that one when the technology one should encompass that. So, does that make sense?
If one replaces the other, that, that's fine.
Or, or either replaces it or it, it creates the process for the other one. So.
This is a fair point. I guess would, would we want to just remove number two altogether? Or do we want to keep that in there just to ensure that it's top of mind? Counselor Barilla.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. I think we should keep it in here for top of mind because it's one of the things we suggested tonight. And I think we want to make sure that that is implemented and done in a, in a way that would be consistent with the new software.
Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, agreed. I mean, there's still, while the agenda software will be. I mean, there's still while the agenda software will be in place, there will still probably be a need for maybe storing public comment or something like the office needs to be aware of how to use this technology to share documents outside of our agenda and in interim within our agenda. I also just wanted to note that, like, this isn't necessarily something specifically on the city clerk to figure out. Like, I think this is very much to Counsel Harvey's point, a delegatable task, 100%. Like, give this to that technology person in the office that is very familiar and comfortable with these. I almost ran away with it when I was trying to do it. But, you know, I think it can definitely be something that is easily delegated.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay, we'll move on to collaboration with mayor's staff. Foster productive working relationship with all city departments. Schedule bi-weekly sync with the chief of staff to discuss issues and process report to council and status these meetings by the calendar year 2024. So just in my mind, this is just setting up a regular cadence with the mayor's office. Go ahead, Eileen.
I would like to say that that goal on collaboration, foster productive working relations with all city departments, I really do feel as though that is unnecessary. I have such great working relationships with all the city departments here in terms of whether it's the Treasury Department, the Finance Department, DPS. I feel as though that's really kind of unnecessary. I mean, I talk to them all the time. That's how I, you know, get a lot of my job done and how other people get a lot of their job done with the budget, setting with Anna with schedule. I mean, it goes on and on and on. We all foster relationship.
I think this
I don't know why that is in there, honestly.
I think this is this is to the point of as a department head, having regular cadences and syncs to ensure that that communication doesn't break down, that we're all sort of on the same page. You don't have to always agree on everything. We're not you're not in the same chain of command, but just ensuring that that communication is open between, not to say it isn't, but to ensure that communication is open between your office and the mayor's office. I would like to see a regular, just a regular sync happening there, but I'm open to seeing what everybody else thinks about that topic. Counsel Gerzle.
Chair, aren't there weekly staff with the mayor every week?
I'm not considered a department head under the mayor. I don't hate when people this. I don't work for the mayor. I hate when people, you know, I don't like to say that because I know it has a different connotation. So I'm not invited to those weekly meetings. I do attend their all department staff meetings when he holds them. So so I don't attend those. They want to invite me to those, that's fine. But the city clerk was never invited to those because there is a distinction between the administration and the legislative body. I have no problem with that.
No, I'm saying do you meetings, when you have those meetings you just mentioned, do you meet like once a month?
A lot of times they get canceled. So I can't remember if they're month. They used to be monthly. It's just where all the department heads like might meet over at 98 Washington Street and listen to what, you know, is current going on in the city that the mayor gives a report. Excuse me. And then everybody in the, you know, that's there gets to get kind of an update of what their office is doing.
So I guess the way that the way that I think about this is that when I just think about on a personal level myself, I I have people that I work with that I don't report to and that are not in my reporting structure, but that the people that do work with me rely upon me having a good relationship with that person. And all of our success sort of depends upon communication and keeping those channels of communication open. And I find, and I'm not I'm not trying to micromanage this, but I'm just looking at, you know, what we would want to see from a department head or we consider a department head is having that open chain of communication between two offices. Not not saying there has to be more than a 20-minute meeting that happens every other week.
Again, I feel as though I have great relationships with all the department heads. And if I need the mayor or I call him or I ask to meet with him, I get in and I see him and I go over those things. So, I mean, if if somebody wants me to meet with him once a month, I'll meet with them. Him, I just I just feel as though this is something that, you know, I do on a regular basis.
I don't know who who stands up first, but Counsel Stott, Counsel Verella, and Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So I think this is an excellent goal. I like how it's spelled out like this. I also come from the corporate world where I work with many different departments that I report to or don't report to. And while it's it's great to to work together, having these check-ins on a regular basis is really helpful. So things don't come in. They might feel like things come in out of the blue that you're not aware of. Or where, what is this? Having a regular sync check-in with someone to know what they're working on, to know what's going to be coming in, really helps build that relationship. I don't think this goal is at all saying that you don't work with the other department heads. We know you do. You have to to do your job. You have to get signatures. You have to do that. You have to ask questions. But to have more of a productive collaborative relationship, and this is a two-way street. This is
Sorry, didn't interrupt. Thank you. It is a two. I think you appreciate that saying.
Yes, so it's it's not like, you know, the one versus the other. This is you both go to each other to discuss issues and processes and projects and things going on. And I can I can see this as probably being one of the most productive goals that will help you, will help the mayor's office, will help all of us just really kind of get to that next level of communication. I don't think it's a, you know, meet just to meet or meet to have like tasks or things like that, but really kind of figure out how to best collaborate together. So thank you for presenting this goal.
Counsel Verella.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. I'd like to agree that this goal should stand. And to your point, Eileen, you say that you work collaboratively with the departments already. So this shouldn't be something that is is something that is unobtainable. And I just want to speak the elephant of the room, your comment about I don't work for the mayor. We know that. We understand that.
No, I didn't mean to say it.
No, no, if I may, if I may, thank you. I also been around long enough that I know the basically just the role of the clerk from Berkenshaw to La Pointe, that there's always been some kind of rubbing and contention with the clerk's office and the mayor's office that the mayor's office doesn't tell you what to do. I just I listen and I I just have to say, like, it's all about working collaboratively because this is all about our residents. And we do need to collaborate. So I think that this goal is something that is obtainable. And I like to see it in here because I think that's a good measure of of making sure that we're doing as much as we can to continue that collaboration.
And all if I can respond, the only reason for that statement is because Cindy asked, or I'm sorry, Counsel Gerzle asked if if didn't the mayor already have monthly meetings? And I was just trying to explain to her that I'm not included in those monthly meetings because I don't report. There's no line going up there on the org chat. I have no problem with discussing things with the mayor. I think we we get along fine. I mean, I think I got along fine with all the previous mayors. I think it would be great when zoning is coming up. I mean, and to Counsel Stott's point, it is a two-way street. I can't answer for the mayor or what he liked to do. That's not in my purview. But if he liked to, somebody on his staff, the chief of staff, I have no problem with it. I don't know why I don't mean to be given the impression that I do. I just felt the way it was worn, it was a little, you know.
And I will add that the chief of staff has no idea that I've asked.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So that's what I'm saying. I can't respond for them, but I don't have a problem.
And this is just a just a communicating our attention to build to build that relationship. And like, I don't know who said it, but it does it goes both.
Yeah, exactly.
Goes both ways. So it's it's if 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 there's something is being submitted every other week incorrectly or just at the deadline or there's something that is frustrating the office down there, those are best handled between department, in my opinion, between department heads, between you and between the chief of staff. So I think this, I think over time, this is something that could be could be beneficial. But again, this would be between the two of you to work that out. Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, President. Two things. One, there's five goals here. If this is an easy one to check off, good for you. That's great. But I have a different take on this. And that is, you know, everyone's work evolves, changes with technology or just the nature of what what's going on in the world. And one of the best ways to evolve and improve job descriptions is to have goals. So even if, you know, you can check this one off, it doesn't mean that it's not going to enable the next job description when that's written to include this as one of the things. And I think that's, you know, one of the reasons that we're having this meeting is to take the job description that is is and maybe enhance it or change it depending on, you know, how we see things in our relationship.
I would I would agree with that. But I'll also add that I think that I hope that all of this here ties back into that job description that we sent out. But yeah, it's certainly open to interpretation in some ways. Anything else on the collaboration with the mayor's staff? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. And I also want to reiterate to the point that it's a two-way street, that I would see that as an opportunity for the city to know your needs, you know, your, you know, new challenges that are always popping up and that they're in the know of, you know, what could, how they could improve, you know, the circumstances and the challenges that you face. So I have an opportunity for them to hear feedback as well. I'm just not clear on report to the council and status of these meetings by the end of the calendar 2024. I'm not sure, I'm just not clear on how that would be done when we wouldn't first be hearing back until February on all the other issues. So that just seemed, I don't know, fuzzy to me.
That would be something we may want to change. So my my thought and intention in writing this would be that this would be that the reporting back would happen by the end of the year.
Yeah.
We want to put February as the goal. We can do that. And then we can move this last goal out here till by the end of so you say, end of February. What was the what was
It was, you know, the first meeting in February. But just, yeah, add some continuity in in the timelines of these goals and reporting. And as the city clerk had said, to make them, you know, realistic for timelines. But yeah, so up above it says by first meeting in February. So it seems seems practical to me to sync that up.
And the DEI, I mean, if we want to keep it all consistent, we can put the DEI director by just by the first meeting in February, we report back on all of us. Is that is that what we want to do here?
Yeah, it's the will of the body. You know, I don't know how much people want to see it, you know, get pushed out. But it does just seem logical to sync up the reporting back just for practicalness. But whatever is the will of everybody, you know, and with the feedback from the clerk on what works, I just noticed the difference.
Okay. Any goals that aren't aren't in here right now that we'd want to add? Counselor Davis.
I'd love to see something about voter engagement. I don't know what the exact language would be, but to see an outline of, you know, goals over the next three years, strategies we can consider, try to implement, I think would be a positive.
Yeah, I think there's there may be a couple of counselors that feel that way. I guess my own personal feeling on that is I do feel like we move into somewhat dangerous territory when we start talking too much about voting because we all hope to get reelected at some point. I think that we we do run into this sort of like we we oversee the city clerk who oversees elections. Digging too deeply into setting goals around voting voter engagement, I think, could be viewed as something that could be a problem, but we could let everyone else discuss that. Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I mean, I would agree. I think you've hired somebody new for elections. They need to get themselves up and running. They need to reach out and build the relationships with the LLC, with all the other groups, with the legal women voters. I mean, I didn't I didn't raise my hand before because it's not really relevant here. But I was involved in some of the work that you did a couple of years ago during COVID. And, you know, we worked really hard with the LLC, with the legal women voters to figure out ways to increase voter engagement, to get them to the polls. We had buses that we got to run around and pick up people to get them to the polls in case, you know, they couldn't get transportation because polling places were moved. Like, there was a lot of stuff that happened. And I don't know if more people came out to vote. And I would hate to put any goal based on any numbers for that. I think this is a process. I think we need this new person to get up and running. And we need to, and you know this, Eileen, already, like, we they need to and as the city needs to re-engage post-COVID and get a more active group going on getting more people to vote and getting them engaged. And it's hard. It's hard. Like, we've tried so many things and it's hard. So I just want to say that.
Counsel Verella, then Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. As I agree with you, that would be great. But I think with general law, 5116A, and also, it's kind of up to the ex officio and our board of registrars to decide how that happens. So I think I think if we want a mechanism to have more engagement, I think engaging the board of registrars at this time might be the best way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my point to bring up. And I'm sorry. You know, and and to Counsel Marcello's point, and I'm not belaboring the point, but with all the Votes Act that did get passed in, you know, 2020 and permanent with the in-person early voting and the vote by mail and still have an election day, it's unfortunate, but it just feels like it spreads out. The voter turnout, instead of increasing it, at least in, you know, our city or in most cities or towns in Massachusetts, I wouldn't say all of them, but it is, you know. So when you're talking about voter engagement, then the state legislators themselves try to find ways for more people to make it accessible and easier for them to vote. And there still seems to be, you know, a lack in that. But but I do agree with Counsel Verella that it's up to my board of registers to to deal with the voter engagement.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, Chair. I kind of agree with the fact that our office, your office is to run the elections, not bring people to the polls. I mean, that would be, you know, again, the register or whoever. But again, we're asking her or you're asking her to throw another goal into this. She's just going to take up more time and take her time away from something else when we all know it's it's like Counsel Marcello said, it's tough to get people out to vote. I mean, it's not easy. And I just think, you know, she runs the elections. Her having to get the people to the polls, that's, you know, that's another task in itself. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counsel Posniewski.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things that they talked about, I mean, all of these things that we talked about is is really nothing new because we have talked about it before. But now we have it in front of us in writing. And we're setting goals and timelines. And one of the things that I'm looking at is reporting back to the council. What's going to be the mechanism for that? How is the clerk supposed to report back to the city council? Is that going to be something that's going to be open? Is that something that's going to be an executive session? And along with that is will the clerk be able to work with the city council in getting some of these goals accomplished during that time? In other words, if she has any any questions or any if some of these things aren't working, we should know about it. And we should know about, we should know why they're not working and her and her and what barriers and what hurdles she has to do in order to achieve this. So that means that there has to be some kind of a mechanism in place where we all know exactly how, because we don't, we're not in her shoes. We don't know her job exactly. And we don't know exactly day-to-day everything that she has. But if there's some kind of a communication where she knows she's working with us to be able to accomplish these goals, then then maybe all of us can work together be able to accomplish these goals, then, then maybe all of us can work together to, to help her get there. But, but so getting back to my question is how is she supposed to report back to this council and still not violate the public?
Yeah, no, this would be, the motion would be to, to, to hold this, this nomination in committee. And then in that case, it would, we're saying until February, then it would be carried over into the next year. So it would sit in the committee the whole until February of 2025. At that point, then we'd hold another committee meeting to reappoint and we would report back on these goals. These goals are primarily to, to schedule meetings with the DI director, with the chief of staff, to continue the work on the agenda software that has been ongoing for a few years and to get public documents up and available for the, for the public. So that, that, maybe that, that goal is the one that, that we'll continue to need support on, but in my view, these goals are ones that are sort of, aren't micromanaging somebody and saying, you need to do X, Y, and Z. It's saying, show us, show us these things that will get you to a place where your department's able to run more efficiently and then we're able to accomplish the goals of the, that the council sets for you.
So are we going to have monthly committee meetings specifically addressing how this progress is being made?
No, the goal would be to report back in February 2025. Unless this is, unless the goal, will the body is to, to hold a monthly meeting, the motion on the floor would be to take this until, to carry this, to, to, to hold this in committee and then this would have to be carried over and then meet back in February 2025.
I'm having trouble digesting the fairness of that. In other words, we're not going to be talking to the clerk at all about how she's progressing with these goals until February, when she's supposed to report back to us and tell us what she's done so far.
And if it's the will of the body to, to hold a, a meeting regularly, we can, this is going to sit in committee right now.
I think it's something that we should be all working together and helping her input this. So, you know, my suggestion would be that, that we keep open lines of communication with the clerk's office so that, and if it means monthly meetings to do so, then, then we do it. But at least we know what she's doing and what the office is doing and how it's progressing. And if, if it's going great, great. If it's not, we should know why and what we, what we can do to help. So my suggestion would be that there, that we know, we get monthly, bi-weekly, whatever progress.
My, I'll leave it to the rest of the body to, to, to discuss that, but my, my feeling would be that any counselor could reach out and, and ask, how are you doing? What, what's going on here? What, what do you need for support? We're all, we're all technically, she reports to this entire body and we could do that. Having a regular meeting until the end of the year, every two weeks, I think would be a lot to put on the city clerk and a lot would be very unusual. I think this is already, you know, what we've done here tonight, a three-hour, almost two and a half hour meeting is, is unusual. I think doing something like that would be beneath the dignity of the office, in my opinion, but I think that's, I'm open to everyone else's discussion. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Yeah, I, I completely agree. I think that would definitely step to the line of micromanaging. We all know how to reach out to the clerk. The clerk knows how to reach out to all of us. I am confident that if there are issues, that the clerk's line of communication with the council president, with the dean, with all of us here on council is open. Obviously, we follow open meeting laws and we want to have the collaborative discussion in our public committee meetings, but I would put the on us on the council president, to be honest here, to make sure that the check-ins are, if needed, are happening, but I would not want 11 people micromanaging me towards my goals. I would go a little insane. And I think putting timelines of perhaps February for a report is, a check-in is perfectly acceptable. These are, again, guidelines or goals that we've talked about a lot. We just have never put, you know, reporting dates on them before. So that's my two cents.
If you look back at the, two years ago, when there was a pay increase and we, we did, with the pay increase, we set goals, but the goals that were set were not, in my view, actionable goals or anything that we could really report back on. So I think the goal here was to set goals that weren't outside of the reach of, of anybody, but that were actionable and were moving us towards a place where we, where we'd been communicating we wanted to be. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. And I'm also in, in agreement with President Hapworth and Counselor Stott, that that sounds very laborious for the city clerk and to the point of micromanaging. And also, yeah, when I look at this, since we would be changing, you know, to the first meeting, the first week of February, because this would be a committee meeting, not in council, and also, and just eliminating the other deadline dates throughout the document for continuity, as we discussed, landing there just seems like a sufficient amount of time. And yeah, I agree that all those meetings wouldn't, it just doesn't, doesn't feel right that we would, you know, have the clerk having to keep, you know, every step and arranging all those meetings. And I agree also that, you know, we have the president of the council and, and the dean and we all can, you know, communicate as needed.
Yeah, agreed. And hopefully we are all supportive and that Eileen feels comfortable to reach out to each of us. Counsel Posniewski.
Thank you. Maybe I was, I didn't mean to be misconstrued and make it look like anybody was trying to micromanage the clerk, because that's the exact opposite of what I was meaning. I was trying to give our clerk a pipeline to be able to, to be able to reach out and, and talk to either all of us or one of us at a time or anything, but at least giving her an opportunity to say that this is, this is what I'm, what I'm doing, this is what I'm, what I can't do. And just that open line of communication, it's as simple as that. Whether it's the president or all of us individually, that's okay. I just would like to see that, the communication both ways. Thank you.
Agreed. There should be an open line of communication. Thanks to Counsel Posniewski. Counsel Mursul.
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I believe you already have regular meetings with the clerk, right? So I would hope that you would, you would communicate through him if there's anything on here that you have problems with. You also know where to reach me to help with the first two. I am there for you to help set up that process for the agenda software and then how it connects with the, the shared drive. I'm, I'm more than happy to help you with that.
Appreciate that. Can I just also bring one, I mean, I've been trying to look at this as we're talking and stuff, so it's been a little difficult. Just as much as we talked about, you know, not knowing collaboration with the mayors on the, on number one, where it says about including but not limited training of counselors, department heads, mayor staff and IT and all that. Again, I think the mayor would have to decide if, when and if and how, you know, he's on board with that to, you know, to have his department heads trained and him trained and being able to use the new agenda software by the first meeting in February. I, I can't, I need that support as well. And, you know, I, I do know Civic Plus Office Training to the Department Heads Virtual Training. I just, you know, I can't just, I, you know, it's the mayor and his department heads.
I'm open to what everyone else feels in this, but I'm happy to remove all that there. I want the agenda software up and running. Go ahead, Counsel Mursul.
I, I just want to point out that it doesn't mean you have to do the training. It doesn't, it, it needs to be done in order to make the meeting work. They need to know how to get the documents to the right place so that the agenda software can produce the agenda. And so that's all that that's talking about. I understand that you're dependent on the mayor prioritizing that. That's where I think the council president and you can help that happen. I think they will be more than happy to make that happen because it's easier on them too. So I, I hear you that that could be, it could be a roadblock. I think we can make that work though. But I hear you.
Want to bring that up?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I don't want to get that lost because that is, that has to happen for you to make the goal. And so it's not enough for you and Maureen to be trained. We also have to be trained on how to use the agenda software once we're in the meeting and the department heads have to know what format the documents are in and where to put them so that you, so that the software grabs them. Like, there's, it's not going to work without all those pieces. So, but I, I hear you that that has to be their priority. And I, yeah.
I mean, I'm happy to change it to collaborate with necessary staff to ensure agenda items are submitted correctly or something to that effect.
I, I'm sorry. I was just thinking a meeting with the mayor to talk about it would be the first step. No, not, not in general. I'm talking about exactly the, the training for his department heads. Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying that, that's the first step. And if he's not ready for that, I, I'm just, I'm just worried about not meeting a goal. That, that's all I want to make sure and then it's clear and out there.
Counsel Harvey.
Not, thank you, Chair. I'm not saying the goal's not feasible, but from the sounds to me, that we're asking the clerk to get all the other department heads within the city all on board and using this technology by February. And we're setting that as a goal for her, but we don't even know whether the other department heads, you know, who's going to train the people? You just said, I mean, Counsel Mursul just said it's not up to her to train them, but who's going to? So how can we set a goal for her for February? And the same point, we don't even know if the rest of the department heads are going to get the training. So I mean, that, that's almost like, again, I'm going back to, it's like setting somebody up for failure. Until you know for sure that the rest of the department heads are on board with this, it shouldn't be a, a February date set for Eileen to, I mean, you're asking her to try to get everybody else to do their job also.
So this is where I think we do run into issues with, potentially with the micromanagement is that we have a, we have a goal that was set a few years ago, an agenda software that was paid for a few years ago, and then it was set again a year ago, then it's set again this, this past winter. And we, as a body, can't be, can't be dictating how, how this is, how this is going to happen, how, who we're going to train and when we're going to train and how we're going to connect with them, but, but the agenda software needs to get up and running. And I think sometimes in a leadership role, you just need to say this has to get done at this point. And you give as much time as you possibly can and give as much support as you possibly can. But when we start getting into the, into the weeds of like, well, then you're going to go train this guy, then you're going to train this person. I think that's why I was just thinking, maybe just remove this thing altogether and just say you're responsible for getting this thing up and running, but open again to what everyone else feels.
Well, that's my point. Her, she's responsible to get it up and running, but it entails multiple entities to get it up and running the way we want it. And she's not.
And we've, and I just, I'll just.
Make that happen. It's not her department.
And then let's make sure we're going through the, through the chair here, but I, I would just, I would just say this is, this agenda software has been paid for by the City of Salem since before a lot of us were on this, or some of us were on this council. So it has been some time to get, to get to where we need to be. And I think right now we're just like, this needs to, this just has to get done at this point. Counsel Verella.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth. Hope you're brief. So how I take this is I'd love to see this stay in. This is really going to help make sure the software actually happens. This is an actual item where Eileen's just going to provide guidance so that they can submit the paperwork appropriately. So this is, this should stay in here because this is how it's going to work so that she can submit this educational piece so that they know what to submit. That's how it's going to make it happen because if they don't do it properly, it's, it's not going to be effective.
Counsel Mursul.
Thank you. Also, it's not like the training is a day. It's what the file type is and where to put it. That's it. But they have to know that. If they don't know it, they're not going to have their stuff submitted by noon on Tuesday. I mean, it's not, they need to, they are much more involved in the software than, than the department heads are. Like I said, they just need to know what the file format is that they need and where to put it. Right? If it's not put in the right place, it doesn't get on the agenda software. That, that's the problem. So that, once the system's created, once we have a file structure, once they know what they're doing, they just need to train, and train is too big a word here. They need a written process for where to put the stuff and in what format. That's it.
So do we feel comfortable with where we're at on this right now? We're at nine o'clock. Is anyone who has any questions or comments or especially concerns about where, where we're at on these five, five items right now? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to hold this until the first meeting of February 2025 with the following five goals that we set forth here with changes to ensure that everything aligns with February 2025. And then we have the removal of the portion in number two on the committee chairs and the council president to, at the clerk should collaborate with other departments to ensure, terrible handwriting. Yeah. To ensure, yeah, to, to ensure best policies and procedures. And then that's the only changes, other than just changing the, everything to align with February of 2025. And as of right now, we are keeping that, the section on training other departments in, in the item, unless we want to change that. Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. And the only thing that's a little murky and not clear, when it says the first meeting in February, this would be a, a committee of the whole meeting, and that makes it sound like it would go right to the council meeting. So would it should just be by meeting, you know, in, in early February?
So I guess the.
For a point of clarity.
Yeah, the motion could be to report to the full council by the first meeting in February, which would mean that the council president at the time would have to hold between January 1st and February, February, whatever day it would be, I guess 14th or whatever, they would have to hold a committee, a committee of the whole meeting.
Oh, I see, because it says by. Okay. I just was fuzzy.
Is that the best way to, to align that?
Yeah, that, I was just fuzzy. Yeah, that makes sense if it's by that meeting. Okay. I thought it just seemed like it was saying it would be in the council meeting.
Eileen, does that make the most sense to you? Because the meeting would be a committee of the whole meeting and we're not setting that meeting, we're just saying that that needs to happen before the first meeting of February 2025.
So the first meeting in February is February 13th. So the council meeting would have, I mean, the committee of the whole meeting would have to happen prior to that, like even if it's just the day before or what have you, whatever.
Do you want to, do you want to set that, set that date right now or do we want to just say by February 13th?
I think, I like by, I think it's more flexible. Nobody knows what days are available.
Exactly.
And so I think it is correct. I just wasn't, I wasn't interpreting correctly. So yeah, by the first meeting in February.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks. That's the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this or concerns? Okay, so on the motion on the floor to hold until the first meeting of February 2025 with the fall, with the following goals set out, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. I do want to thank you, Eileen. This is not easy. This is not easy for any of us. This was not easy for you. This was two and a half hours of a job performance. We appreciate your hard work. The City of Salem appreciates your hard work and just appreciate everything you've done for us and that you're doing here tonight. Any other comments before we move forward? Any other motions? Motion to adjourn by Counsel Stott, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.